United States of America and to the Republic, for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
I think I'm up to go through the agenda.
Hey, you didn't say, you didn't say five years.
I didn't say eight, oh, I, I did.
No, you didn't.
There you did.
Okay.
All right, good.
Who wants to second?
Second.
Okay, now we have public forum.
Hold on, hold on, girl.
No, you're gonna get out of there, I'm just helping.
Okay, public forum. Okay, how's seconded?
All right.
Yeah, okay, now public forum.
Okay, anybody want to speak?
About the concern agenda.
No, we just did that.
No, we did the agenda.
Yeah, we don't like.
I'm betting most of the agenda not concern agenda.
Yeah. You don't want to approve the consent agenda?
I don't care what you do.
They don't get same by want to speak, huh? Don't ask speaker or no? Old business? Got your own business? New business? You're okay, it's bill, ordinance, amendment, fire department, regulations. Nine eleven, it's selecting the term for five years instead of two. That's what it's about.
Doesn't refer to chief, will he?
Five years instead of two.
Five years instead of two.
Yes.
Can we ask some questions, Mayor?
Well, yes, sir.
If it's two before, why is it, why do we want five now?
With two years, it gives it all going right, getting strict, getting everything going, and then they're gonna change it to somebody new who said they don't even know what's going on. With, with five years, it's more training for the person if it does get over.
Do we have, can I ask our fire chief here's a question?
You sure can.
Do we, because I'm learning about this, but we have an assistant chief?
Yeah, we got fire chief, assistant chief, we actually two assistant chiefs. But the reason why we're placing this is because two years is not a long enough term for a fire chief to actually make his appearance. Fire marshal in the state regulations, they don't, they do not like, you know, a fire chief being rounded out every two years because it looks bad on the department, it looks bad on, you know, drink, raises and everything like that. Thing about it is, is I think a five-year term would be a lot better because like St. Jean, Perryville, they are automatically brought in as a fire chief, the board makes a decision, they do not get booted out of chief unless we're not doing their job right, you know, the city administration sees that, or fire members coming and saying that, you know, he's not doing what he's supposed to do, and then that's whenever they can make their decision, you know, boot him out.
Sure.
But, but the five years and the two years, like right now, I'm take, I took over for the ex-chief. Well, I'm basically still learning and still going forward with it. Basically, I had to get the department out of mishaps, you know, anyway, and with the help of others. But the thing about it is, is, you know, a fire chief is doing his job right and they turn around and some of the fire members don't like the way he's doing progress, but it's actually the right progress, they can all turn around and vote and say, we don't want him no more, we want a new guy in, and that's not right. Training, training is number one in my book, I mean, you know, you should have the training.
So, so to bring me up to date on it, we have, I was looking for five years, and sounds reasonable, the, how many volunteer fire people do we have?
We got fifteen that's actually active right now.
And what are their ranks?
Basically, I got two that's assistant chief, two that's captain, one that's lieutenant, and then I got two engineers, and the rest are firefighters, you know, that, they're just firefighters.
Are they all paramedics?
No.
How many paramedics do we have?
We don't have no paramedics, we only got one EMT, the rest are first responders, which first responder is a, a small portion of EMS.
Sure.
Anyway, we know how to do life-saving matters and first aid, and that's basically what EMT knows, we don't have no paramedics. Paramedic schooling, I actually looked into that, you're looking at almost five to six years of training, plus it's gonna be anywhere from twelve to fifteen hundred dollars.
So, so we have a fully, a fully staffed volunteer fire department, you feel good about that?
I feel good with the most part of it. I mean, we got some changes we gotta do a little bit more, and like I said, I stepped into a, a process that was, went from good to bad, now it's going backwards. So, anyways, our minimum status is you gotta have six months worth of training, or you're gone, and that's six months in a calendar year, in twelve month calendar year. The point about that is, is I still think on that part that I think you should come to training anytime you can.
Is everybody getting into the training?
For the most part, now they're starting to actually pick up on it since the, the strict ruling actually started getting stricter, so.
So, it's up to our, our fire chief to cross that standard and get everybody educated and get everybody there?
Basically, the fire chief's job is to make sure the training's there for our ISO, make sure the grant fund are getting established, and make sure the department and the equipment's running fine, that's, you know, basically the fire chief's job, so.
That's a pretty good volunteer force of two people.
Yeah.
That's all my questions.
I got some questions here, Mayor. You say that a two-year term isn't actually long enough to get a process that you want, you know, to go.
Well, basically, in my opinion on that, the process of a two-year term, if a chief is doing his job right and making standards right, and basically, we got a protocol we gotta go by and everything, and if, if that chief is making that protocol replace, and, you know, the firefighters, there are certain ones that may not like that, when it comes to that time of voting, they can vote that fire chief is actually doing his job and getting things done right, or, you know, keeping, but if they don't like the fact that the way he's doing it because they don't wanna do it, they can knock you out, put a new one in, which you guys have gotta make the board approval of the new one coming in, but that's the, the standard on that. The other part is, fire marshals, state records, they really don't like seeing a fire chief change every two years. They turn around, they'd rather, you know, a fire chief to go for a while, but if, like, for mishaps on the incident we had where we had a new fire chief and then the next fire chief took over after a two-year term, they kinda look at that like we ain't established right, you know, I mean, that there's, uh, un- variable things going on in the fire department that, you know, that they're looking at.
Okay, now, uh, you are elected by the volunteer, fire chief is elected by the volunteer fire department?
The fire chief is elected by the fire, majority of the fire department.
Okay, just, okay, so you're an elected official, just like all of us sitting here. We each, mayor, alderman, to your terms. Now, if we screw up, don't do our job, boom, we're out. How long, Frankie, how long was Joe fire chief?
Joe fire chief for five years.
Five years?
Yeah.
Okay, so that means he got elected twice and then, well, he got burned out, I guess, he's.
Joe, Joe would've kept on being fire chief because he had the training, the experience, and we as the fire department seen him as a chief.
Well, that's, that's understandable, but what I'm saying is, what, like I said, if we do our job, if we do what's best for the city and best for our constituents, you're gonna get reelected, just like Joe got reelected. And I'm a little leery about this five-year term. Did you, did you put this up to a vote for the volunteers out there to vote on if they thought it was a good idea?
We, I, we asked them.
Did they vote, 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 did you, did you vote?
Well, we didn't vote, like vote, like write it down, say yay or nay.
Right.
Basically, we went to firefighter, firefighter, and turned around and asked, they turned around and said it possibly be a good idea to do. Anyways, and then I had some that said no, but the majority of them, and I mean, one of them sitting there, and I got three other ones that said the same thing, they said it'd be a good idea to do, so anyways, I mean, the other one, he ain't here to not to voice his opinion as assistant chief, but, but, I mean, they said that'd be a great thing to do because it'd make us look more presentable, more professional in the department. Now, in terms of if you guys did five years, the fire officials come in here and said, hey, he's not doing what he's supposed to be doing, and they know for a fact, you guys can terminate me from being fire chief, you guys accepted me as fire chief, you guys terminated me as fire marshal. So, that's the point that I'm getting at with the whole, uh, well, what's, I, I would feel more comfortable, Frankie, if you would get your firefighters and you guys have a vote, not a, not a raise a hand vote, but a ballot vote. Because, and, and the reason why I'm saying that is, uh, you might come up to me and, and ask me something, and I might agree with you just so I wouldn't piss you, make you mad or something like that, but if I get a, get a vote, a written vote, that I disagree with
you, it's going in there. I would like to see numbers, is what I'm saying.
Well, yeah.
And, and, uh, there's been instances that, been some turmoil out there, and you, I think some of you people know what I'm talking about, and if a person gets stuck in there in a five-year term, I seen a lot of turmoil sitting here at this table, before I was even an alderman, I would much rather put up with two years of hell than five years of hell. So, now I'm just saying, I would feel comfortable, I don't know about these guys, but I would feel comfortable if it was put to a vote by your firefighters.
Well, yeah, but the other thing is too is, he's not here, which is Joe, the ex-fire chief, he said that it would be an actual good idea to do too, because, you know, this point blank to you, you know, you make this firefighter do his training, he don't wanna do it, you're picking, because you don't wanna do it, and then they go and cry, that's the point I'm getting at. When you get a bunch of them start crying about not doing training, then it just, everything just basically goes to heaven.
Well, 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 uh, Joe didn't have that problem, did he? If he, if he was a fire chief for five years, Frankie, what I'm saying is, if, if you make people mad, if I make people mad in my, my ward, been nice knowing you, Paul, see ya, and the same thing, any, any elected official, even a fire chief.
Well, I understand that.
But what I would feel more comfortable, like I said, I'd feel more comfortable about voting on this, if like, if you guys would just have a ballot, secret, you know, a secret ballot.
Let me dovetail on this, please, Paul.
Sure, sure.
I think Paul's got a great point, and as you were talking, I was thinking about, and all due respect for you, because I know you work hard and you're trying to learn the standards, and it's a volunteer fire department, let's face it, but it still is an organization that runs with rules, and I guess the risk of making a change without that vote is the morale of all the volunteers, which are all equal to you and to us and to everyone else, giving up their time to save people's properties, their lives, or whatever they're up to, so they're all equal in my eyes, and I think what Paul's trying to say is, we respect the fire chief, he's been, it's been elected and, for those two years, and his word is his word, and he's gonna press the standard, if you're gonna try to change that to five years, you need to have the whole volunteer fire department behind you for that, because it's gonna cause morale problems down the line, you know, five years. How long have we been a fire, volunteer fire department?
Hundred years.
How long?
Hundred years.
Hundred years, has it always been every two years, elected fire chief?
It hasn't always been every two years.
The thing about electing every two years like elected us is it teaches you how to work with people, how to represent them, and a fire chief not only represents the community, but he represents the volunteers. So, I'm for what Paul said about the, the vote, because I think if we did have a vote, I could fully stand behind that.
Let's make a decision of what.
If it was gonna be five, five years, so that's my.
Make a decision, what you wanna do.
Well, I, I would just like for him to vote, you know, just, just have a secret ballot and just, you know, have, uh, uh, well, year ago with the fire department, like whenever you wanna have your, you know, the vote on this, get over Ryan and, just, I mean, I mean, okay.
Do they send you?
And if Ryan can go out there, watch the vote, count the ballots, we're good to go. And it's not, Frankie, it's nothing against you or any of the other firefighters, I just remember a few years ago, there were some problems, you know what I'm talking about?
What's that problem at?
Well, you know what I'm, you know what I'm talking about, and five years is a long time, but if your people, you know, the majority of your people wanna do that, go for it.
Then, then bring that back to.
Yeah, bring it back, you know, and, uh.
But, I mean, the only reason why I was asking for it is because I know how Perryville, St. Jean run, Ojor runs the same way, you know, thing about it is.
They're all five years.
Well, they're actually in tow, they're ready to give up or, you know, step down, they're basically, okay, I'm done, go to the board, I'm done, and then a new fire chief gets represented, and normally, I have a ten, it's assistant chief that steps up into that zone, so.
That's the way it used to be in St. Mary's, as long as they wanted to stay in the office of fire chief, they were there, until somebody changed.
I think the, I think the two-year, um, thing is, is, you're respecting, you're respecting the volunteers, who are all equal, but to ask for that kind of change from the volunteers who are all equal seems to be fair, and so I think, I think I would be for getting a vote from the volunteer that you have.
You, I mean.
Uh, for the five years?
My opinion on that voting and just saying, I think that firefighters, it's got, you know, their training and everything, and I think they should be the ones that actually vote, and it's, because, I mean, I got firefighters that's on fire department, but I, they ain't showing up. Now, which some of them I got that's active, active members right now because they're out on jobs, you know, I mean, I do got that, but, and then I got some that's active members still because they've done with the fire department for fifty years, but they don't show up to training, they done did their time. So, I mean, the thing about it is, is that's the reason why I keep them, you know, on the department, because they done did their time, you know, so that's, I don't know, but like the younger generation, they turn around and think that, you know, oh, he's just being, you know, a hard butt, you know, and I'm sorry, I've done, done their training, I know what training's all about, I just went through fire one and two for six months, so, I mean, it was rough training, and that's what you gotta train for, is train, and, you know, to do your job, you know, we, us as a volunteer, we're still an actual, we gotta be professional.
That's right. Well, I think that, and, and the chief has to build a team, and it's a big team building exercise, and I think what Paul is trying to coach you through is, is the same thing that I was gonna wrap up on anyway, and that is that you gotta bring your team together on this, regardless if they're here or not, it's terrible to make a decision like this and have five or six of those people not even know what happened until someone else tells them, so I would like for you to come to me, talk to me about more of what you'd like to do, and we'll set up something to do, that's what I suggest.
And, yeah.
And, and then we can bring it back to the board after we have a complete program and get it approved.
I got one suggestion, Frankie, you, down to your next meeting, what's going on, and if you can bring over half of the aldermen here to stand behind you, there can't be no objections then.
Well, I'm sure, I got a majority of them.
I know, that's what I'm trying to say, bring them to the meeting there, have them sign a paper or anything. That way, it'd be fair to you, you understand what I'm saying?
I'd still like to see a vote, really.
But it would be.
Well, I think the whole volunteer fire, we have to look at the fire departments as all, all volunteers.
You guys have about twenty minutes now, can I say something?
Sure, go.
All you have to do is ask.
I'll do that. Like you said, he's got a department that are working, you know?
Yeah.
So, you can take a vote on it night, what if they're working on midnight, you have three eleven, they can't be there.
Well, I think you should let us handle it, and I think we'll try to work it out. I think I'm gonna be over the fire department.
I'm taking, I have a damn floor.
You're asking, and I'm telling you.
You'll wait till I tell them.
All right, guys.
He can let me speak?
Yes.
Forget it, any shit talking about it.
No, I think you're, I think you're right.
You guys, so, Frankie, and if I can do anything, you come talk to me. Now, let's go to the next thing, which is, let's go with Sean first. What's up? Anyway, I forgot, I forget what I'm doing. What's coming, what's coming tonight? No, there it is. Okay. Employee rate of pay. Yes. Employee rate of pay, we're voting you first, Sean. He, he would like either have his beer, beer. His gas allowance back, I need one, I think, his gas allowance back, or he would like a raise, 'cause he drives so far. Now, Clyde, I can say?
No.
Well, can I say something?
Yes.
You know, Christmas is coming up, the employees are gonna get their Christmas bonus, I would like, and I'd like to crunch some numbers, so I, I would like to make a motion that we postpone this until we can look at some numbers, uh, postpone it till, well, some time after the first of the year, because we ain't rich by any means, everybody knows that, but I just, I just would like to crunch some numbers and see what we can come up with.
You got anything?
Yeah, yeah, I'm making a motion to, yeah, just, can we table, I'll, I'll make a motion to table this until I get the first year.
Okay, Sean? Okay.
I'm gonna vote on it?
All right, favor.
Aye.
And then we got Frankie. Frankie needs to raise, I, I'm, I might go put this where it don't sound too true, but I think that him and Mike should be making the same amount.
Well, that's, but I was, it says employee rate of pay, it doesn't, you know, I thought you, everybody, that's why, okay, I make a motion that we table this, cut first year.
I see.
All right.
All right, favor.
Aye.
Okay, you can go on the table. So, I guess, department reports, emergency management.
All right, on October nineteenth, I participated in the Great American Shakeout, it's an earthquake exercise they have every year on WebEOC, you're gonna test our communication system. We had two events here in City Hall, we had a flu clinic on October twenty-four, and we also had a drug take-back program on October twenty-seven, they had decent attendance on both of those, and somebody from the life center was here for both events, occasionally had questions regarding their programs. I also participated yesterday in a WebEOC exercise, there's a new board, the situation status update, where they must all be gathered, works with the same as they did before, this is just, looks different. Oh, also, I got a call from the USDA, they said that we're eligible for grants at fifty-five percent, so that means that we would have to match or pay our partner, which would be forty-five percent for anything we put in for, they said, you guys need any fire trucks or police vehicles, and I was like, well, what about things like turnout gear? They said they would apply to that as well. Their grants were kinda different, they don't have like, like, you know, application filing dates, you just kinda put your grant out there, and they might have money, they might not, you know, and it might take a year for you to get, you know, for them to get money, so if there's anything that the fire department or police department wanna go in for, and they're willing to pay forty-five percent of it, then we should, I'll just, I'll ask them for the paperwork now, in case if you guys wanna, you know, pursue that, and that's all I got.
Well, okay, water and sewer.
Oh, Christ. Well, water and sewer samples, they're good. We worked on a couple grinder, grinder boxes, and we had to replace a grinder up in Marion Cliff. Had a water leak on Seventh, had to replace the whole line, and, uh, we had an overflow on, on, on water tire, the new water tire, and what happened is, on a sample line, where we pull our samples for chlorine, down in the pit, there was a fitting, and it was bad, and it was leaking water, and the way we checked our water levels in our tanks is down at the plant on the board, and it's pressure, so much pressure tells you how many feet of water is in there. Well, board was showing number one tire had a hundred and two and a half feet, it overflowed, so, uh, how much water we lost, I know Frankie, see, we, we was up in Marion Cliff, it was Saturday, wasn't it?
No, Sunday, Sunday.
Was it Sunday we did that?
Yeah, Sunday, and then Saturday, Saturdays wouldn't start, and then Sunday.
Oh, that's right, 'cause we shut, we shut, yeah, shut her off, okay, but we, we shut the feed off when we caught it, but anyway, I guess it was Friday, you didn't run it for him till in the afternoon sometime, right?
No, it's, uh, Sunday I turned around and ran in the afternoon, Monday's when we caught it.
Was it Monday we caught it? I thought it was the weekend.
No, it wasn't.
Well, anyway, we don't really know how much we've lost, uh, because we're gonna try to figure out how much we put, we, we got from the county, how much usage we've had, and then we're gonna try to figure out, just, you know, not exact, but ballpark figure how much we've lost, but we lost quite a bit of water. And, uh, basically, that's it.
Okay, department secretary not here, street department. Okay, fire department?
Oh, yeah, three calls this month, a few minutes pause, and, uh, one brush fire call, and we did training with those who were last Saturday, shut on water, the scene, so we get them, uh, two hundred GPMs for over two hours for their ISO, which were mutual aid with them, so they're mutual aid with us too. Uh, we got the warning light put on the back of our tankers, so that way when we're at calls on the side of the road, everybody can see that there's an emergency activated, you know, it's our emergency light activated on the back now, uh, that's basically all I got.
Animal control, go up please, department, I didn't work at all.
Uh, we got new lights in the car, thanks to Cody back there, he sent us a lot of money installing those lights, uh, we took the light bar off the white car and burned it down to the fire department, which we donated another light bar to them, so we found our trucks.
their trucks. Fully drive boxes are out on the location for fully drive this year, and so basically all I got.
Now we go to animals control.
Animals report.
Is there a citizen? Party, party, whatever.
Question?
Party, thank you.
No, but I wanted to say one more thing, uh, to Frankie, our first, before we close the meeting. Frankie, if it helps you out at all, uh, to get these men together for a vote, I would call a day for a vote, if only ten of those fifteen people show up, that's the vote.
Yeah.
If only five of those fifteen people show up, that's the vote.
Well, that's the way it happened anyway, it was very, uh, your turn.
Right, so I would work on anybody being at work or whatever, even though I know what you're doing, and you can get your vote, and I bet that you'll get it, and you bring it back here, and we got the five-year change for you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna say this real fast, too. There's two people gonna try that house down beside me. Ponder is one of them, and, uh, Fisher is the other. We've checked into it, he's called a lawyer, we've done everything to cover ourselves that we're not gonna be in danger of anything.
Question for you? That brick and all that stuff, are you gonna use it for fill?
Whatever, Ponder, he's cleaning it up, whatever he wants to do with it, he said he had a placement for it.
That's good, 'cause I've got something, I've got a place I could fill.
He said he had a placement.
He's got a place, that's good.
Okay, that's all I want to say.
What you want to do there?
I'll second it.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.